I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Guyman City Council of October 25th, 2018. At this time, I'd like to ask Jeremy Quinser of the First Baptist Church to come up and give our invocation. If you'd rise.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we acknowledge your sovereign rule tonight by the authority of our Lord Jesus Christ, and we acknowledge that you have by your authority established this council, and we thank you for the provision of government for our town. Father, we pray your will would be done tonight in this place as it is in heaven. We pray for our many needs, for our community. We know that we have many needs. We pray for protection for our citizens and safety for our emergency personnel, our firemen, our EMTs, and our police force. Father, we pray you would give us wisdom and help now today as we make decisions. We pray for forgiveness for those decisions we have made that have not been according to your will as revealed in your word, and we pray for mercy now and unity of mind so that our community would flourish and you would be glorified. We pray this all in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Crone, would you lead us in flights?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is attendance roll call.
Peterson?
Here.
Swager?
Here.
Alvedras?
Crone?
Here.
Livinggood?
Here.
Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments and announcements. Before I break it open to the public, I'd like to recognize Mr. Crone got his face put on the flagpole the other day.
I did?
Oh, yeah. With the veterans deal that says just grown exponentially, and I'm tickled to death about it. I hear a lot of good things about it, but thank you for your service and...
We're out of poles. We're gonna have to come up with an alternative.
We'll do that. But thank you anyway. Any public comments and announcements? Any public comments and announcements? Agenda item number five is discussion of possible action on approval of ordinance number 838 and ordinance amending the employment-retirement system, defining contribution plan for the city of Guyman and Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Guyman and the Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing to entry date, providing for severability or repeal and severability, and declaring an emergency. You wanna...
This is in transition with IBTS employees coming back to the city of Guyman, and that's what this is. The plan that has been put in place will take on those employees, the ones that were hired or current IBTS employees, transitioning back to the city of Guyman effective January 1st of 2019.
Any comments or discussion?
Does that, I believe they're in 401K now, will their 401K transfer automatically over to this?
Actually, sir, the system is a 401A. The A denotes that it is a governmental retirement plan, and so that employee, whenever they leave IBTS, they actually have the ability to do with their 401K what they would like to. It's their personal business. If they would like to roll it into their account here at Guyman, they would have the ability to do that, and we will work with them to make that happen. But if they chose to roll it to a traditional IRA or just take a distribution of that IBTS 401K, they could do that as well.
But there is tax benefits to them to roll it over?
Absolutely. Basically, if they roll it into the OMRF plan or to a traditional IRA, there's no tax consequences of that rollover. That is correct. And just to piggyback on what the city manager, Mr. Wagner, had said, this purely really applies to only those IBTS employees who were hired as a result of post-IBTS coming into Guyman. All of the pre-employees who transitioned to IBTS, this does not affect them at all. They are automatically 100% vested in the plan. But basically, what we're trying to do is give all of those employees who were hired after IBTS came here, we want to give them credit for vesting purposes for that IBTS service within the plan. Okay? So like, for example, if somebody had started a year ago, they would have one year with IBTS, and then whenever they come back January 1st to the city of Guyman, they would only have to do six more years to be vested totally. One year of service with IBTS, six more, totaling seven.
So a person had six, and they come, a person had six, and then one year or three years with IBTS, they would be vested already to roll it over?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And the rollover, this is not conditional upon a rollover.
Okay.
All right? It's regardless. Whatever IBTS service they had, they will have that service in the new plan. All right? And I would highlight in your agenda packets, the specific item is on Exhibit A, page two, Exhibit A, page two, and it's under item number three, entry date. And it specifically says, "Effective January 1st, 2019, with respect to an employee who became employed by the employer on January 1st, 2019, and was employed by IBTS immediately prior to employment with the employer, the service of such IBTS employee shall for purposes of this section, Section 3, be deemed to count towards the employee's commencement date." We're giving them credit for that period of time. Okay? That is the only change that is being made to your plan, sir.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number 838, amending the employee-retirement system and defined contribution plan with the city of Guyman and the Guyman Utility Authority, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Guyman and Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing entry date, providing for repealer and severability.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Make a motion to declare this an emergency?
Second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Got four ayes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you for your time.
Agenda item number six is presentation of monthly activities and financial report by the Artist Incubation. Is anybody from Artist Incubation here? Here we go.
Hello, my name is Burton Kirkhart. I am the gallery director at All Fired Up Gallery. Let's see. Financials, total income $1,018.23, total expenses $3,553.63. Community partnership and participation, we attended OPSU Images Art Club meetings introducing ourselves and new artists, plans for Christmas open house, booking carriages, bands, writing OAC grant, recruited new artists from OPSU and here in Guyman. Yvonne Shankster Adult Painting Workshop, two-day event, September 14th and 15th. Events and plans upcoming, first Christmas open house merchant meeting Thursday, 10:00 a.m. at the gallery. Anyone can show up. It's 20 minutes, and yeah, making plans and sharing past successes. Annual miniature art show, work with both OAC and city of Guyman. Marketing, radio using city taglines, digital city logo and social city logo. Love you all.
Any questions?
Miniature art show, when is that?
Miniature art show, that would be the Saturday, the 17th. It's the week before Thanksgiving. We're doing entries for, on November 9th, I believe.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Agenda item number seven, presentation of a monthly activities and financial report by Main Street Guyman. Ms. Johnson?
Hi, thanks for the recess. September was a busy month. We had, and I didn't even put it in the report, but we did have the Fiesta. The Business Development Committee is, we're working on a workshop that'll be a six-week-long workshop. I'm not sure what part of the year, and it will be for people who are considering starting their own business. So it'll go through, it'll be a night class and work with people on that. And I'm not sure when it will be because Jada, Jada's talking about, our career focus starts in September usually, and Leadership Guyman is usually in, well, I don't know, it ends in May.
It ends, yeah.
So it goes through. So we may actually swap that so she's not having to work with Leadership Guyman during, when she's busiest with Pioneer Day. So when we do this, planning your, the workshop, I'll probably do that at the same time as the Leadership Guyman. And then BOP had the business and breakfast on September 11th on QuickBooks. It was really good. They did a great job. It was full. Career Focus started, and we will end, it goes for eight weeks. Velma Schultz from the city is in that one this year, so that's good. We had 25 families sign up for the Aggie football family this year, and we don't have that many players. Sean, I mean, do you wanna have an Aggie family? It's a little late, I know.
Let me talk to my wife.
Okay, just in case, you know, 'cause tonight we're playing Phase 10 rummy, so it's not a bad deal. Farmer's Market finished in September, all five Saturdays it went. There were three of the meet-me-at-the-market events, and they were fun. The salsa contest got pretty serious. I don't know if you guys, I mean, and it was all men that won. That irritated me. So OPSU baseball team, they win our volunteer of the month because they had, I believe it was 60 boys that worked Fiesta, and they did a wonderful job. September volunteer hours was 496, and there were 125 different volunteers during that time, so it was just busy. Now, Pangaea, we're having that international event. It's on November 6th, and there will be seven families featured in it. Alka and Jake Lamas will be India or Asia. Michael Gapkeck and his wife from South Sudan will be for Africa. John Olson and his daughter Faith for Norway. Oh, gosh, I could ask you, couldn't I, for the Norwegian?
August 50/50.
Okay, well, that's probably all he is too. But Shelby Redcorn, Osage India for North America, Tito Aznar from Argentina for South America, Sam Lemon from Australia, and then Austin Ronnie will be from the special needs culture that goes with Antarctica. And that's November 6th, and tickets are on sale now. There's no tickets at the door, and it's a seven-course meal that goes with it. And that night of Pangaea, we moved it up to that night because that's our first night with the Main Street state training that's coming in. So they will come in on the 6th, they'll leave on the 8th. From Ada Altis, Ardmore, Cherokee, Claremore, Collinsville, Duncan, Durant, El Reno, Enid, Hobart, Idabel, Kendall Whittier in Tulsa, McAllister, Muskogee, New Kirk, Okmogee, Perry, Poncasity, Poto, Prague, no, how do Okies?
Prague.
Prague. Pryor, Sepulpa, Stockyard City, Talacqua, Tulsa Route 66, Wagner, Wilberton, and Yukon. So they'll all be here, and I hope you get a chance to say hey to them. Questions?
How much are tickets for Pangaea?
$30. But if you buy a ticket of eight, and you know Mitch, the city could buy a ticket of eight, and all of these guys could take their wives, and it's $200, so then they're 25. Okay?
Any other questions? Thank you. Agenda item number eight is presentation of the proclamation declared the week of October 22nd through 26th, 2017. I think it should be 2018, but anyway, as fire prevention week. So Chief, you got some folks here? Cut that one. We're honored to have you gentlemen take time out of your evening to be here. So I'll read the proclamation, then we'll present it. Whereas the city of Guyman, Oklahoma is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Guyman, whereas far as a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire with four out of five U.S. fire deaths occurring there. Whereas home fires killed 2,735 people in the United States in 2016, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States report, respond to 3,500, 352,000 home fires. Whereas the fire death rate per 1,000 home fires reported to the U.S. Fire Departments was 10% higher in 2016 than in 1980. Whereas Guyman's residents should identify places in their home where fires can start and eliminate those hazards, and install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside every separate sleeping area, and on every entry level of the home. Whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Guyman's residents should listen for the sound of the smoke alarm, and when it sounds, respond by going outside immediately to a designated meeting place. Whereas Guyman residents who have planned and practiced a home escape fire plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Guyman's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protective, protection education. Whereas Guyman's residents are responsible to public education measures and are able to take action to install, to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2018 Fire Prevention Week is look, learn, listen, be aware, fire can happen anywhere. Effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Mayor Tim Peterson, Mayor of Guyman, do hereby proclaim October 22nd through 26th Fire Prevention Week throughout the city, and I urge all the people of Guyman to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of Guyman's fire and emergency services during the Fire Prevention Week 2018.
In addition to being part of these people, I really appreciate you guys being in that service and everything else.
Give to these guys. 1,600 kids this week.
Agenda item number nine is discussion of possible action on approval of ordinance number 839, an ordinance of the city of Guyman, amending the city of Guyman Code of Ordinances, Part 9, adding Chapter 6, medical marijuana licensing and business regulations and establishing regulations for retail medical marijuana establishments, commercial marijuana growing facilities, wholesale marijuana facilities, marijuana storage facilities, and repeating all ordinances to the contrary and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend that item be tabled, and the reason is, this ordinance was patterned after a similar ordinance in Broken Arrow, and a district judge in Tulsa has held that ordinance to be invalid and is trying to step over state law that he believed preempted local law. So until those issues are resolved either in court or by the legislature, I recommend that the city not enact an ordinance regarding that.
Do we need to have a motion and table it, or?
Motion to table.
I'd like to ask a question. Is there a solid state law on this yet that we can pattern after?
It's a bare bones. The state law basically provides for licenses for a user and for caretaker, a license for a grower, a license for a processor, and a license for retailer, and a transportation license. And other than the fact that retail establishment can't be located within 1,000 feet of the entrance of a school, that's about the only reg they've got. So currently, the only regulations that we would have that would affect it at all are the existing zoning ordinances that we have, which would govern commercial activity, growing activity, and processing activity. So the short answer is, state law's bare bones and a lot of, I'm advised there are other lawsuits pending now against other ordinances that were adopted and folks wanting to get into business and saying their position is that that area's been preempted by state law and that local jurisdictions can't do anything about it. I looked at, I looked at a few ordinances from other cities. One of them had a, had a fee schedule in it, and, well, so did, Broken Arrow had a fee schedule in a resolution, in another ordinance. But the judge commented in his order that there was not a provision in state law allowing the local jurisdiction to impose a fee, a permit fee. So it's, it's pretty vague right now. Cities are limited in what they can do.
Is there a starting date that we know of that they can produce, or?
Yeah, like, right now.
Right now?
Yeah.
Once their permit is approved?
Yeah, once they get, once they get their state license, there's a licensing procedure in those categories that I listed there, and once they have, once they have those licenses, then they can go and use that license.
Okay.
And the state law sets fees. The grower, the processor, and the retail distributor are $2,500 each. A user or caretaker is $100 for that person, unless they are covered by Medicare, Medicaid, or Sooner Care, and then it's $20. But those are, those are really about the only, they have requirements for getting a state license, certain information that has to be provided, have to be a resident of Oklahoma to be a licensed user, so, but there's, there aren't, you know, there aren't really very stringent-looking requirements when you read the state law.
So in other words, if a person has their license here in Guyman, as long as they would put it in a commercial zoning area?
Yeah, as long as they fit within a zone, a proper zoning area, then they could, you know, if they have their state license, they can move forward.
And you're recommending that we don't really do anything until it's cleared up downstate?
Yes, that's it, you know. And it'll either be through the courts or by the legislature, and I expect the legislature will get to it in the spring, which would be a quicker process than going through the appellate process. But Broken Arrow is, they are feeling that judge's ruling.
Any discussion, questions, motion?
I'd like to make a motion, table item nine.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion of possible action on Resolution Number 18-09, acceptance of the dedication of an easement for sewer line purposes.
And you said this was for?
The Seaboard, the Seaboard plant that made the go-around for the new facilities that they are currently building on the sewer line.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 18-09. I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second.
Livinggood?
Obey.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got three ayes.
Agenda item number 11, do we need to just table that?
Yes.
Yes, I'd recommend a motion to table item 11 on fees.
Make a motion, we table item 11.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion of possible action on approval of Budget Amendment Number 4 for the Guyman Development Fund, Number 16, for an increase of $51,080. Budget amendment is attached.
This is the remaining cost due to Kimley Horn for the soccer complex. This is out of the Nash Foundation monies that the city, the city of Guyman is holding within our account, but we did not have that budgeted, so that is the budget amendment. But that is Nash Foundation money.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Budget Amendment Number 4 for the Guyman Development Fund, 16, for an increase of $51,000, $51,080.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone?
Nay.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got three ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion of possible action on approval of lease estoppel certificate between the city bank and trust and the city of Guyman.
So what this is, is, estopples pretty much an agreement that in the change of ownership, we still are accepting what we currently went through, and that is the purchase of this building, that we're not gonna back out. It's kind of a reassurance for them that, hey, what we agreed upon with the current business that we did, we will continue on in this process as well. Nothing has changed within the agreement. It's the same over the lease agreement for City Hall. I would ask if the council wills to agree to this that the date at the end is not correct, and that I would like to reflect that we have paid through November. We are current within everything, so.
Any discussion? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve of the lease estoppel certificate between the city bank and trust and the city of Guyman with the stipulation that we have paid through November 2018.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
You've got four ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion of possible action on approval... on Approval of the Two Thousand Nineteen Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, Number One Twenty-Five, Union Contract Between the City of Guyman and the Fraternal Order of Police. Any questions, discussion?
Both sides are?
We have come to an agreement with Fraternal Order of Police, and I'm happy to present that to y'all tonight for approval.
I'd like to make a motion to approval of the Twenty-Nineteen Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number One Twenty-Five, Union Contract Between the City of Guyman and Fraternal Order of Police.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number fifteen is discussion and possible action on Approval of the Two Thousand Nineteen Local Forty-two Fifty-six Union Contract Between the City of Guyman and Professional Firefighters of Guyman. Agreement is attached. Same deal?
The only thing that changed within this one was Article Twenty-three, and that was just a date. Other than that, the timeline had passed, and it's pretty much the same as it was previous year.
I'll make a motion that we approve of approval of the Twenty-Nineteen Local Forty-two Fifty-six Union Contract Between the City of Guyman and the Professional Firefighters of Guyman. Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number sixteen is discussion and possible action on Acceptance of the Site Infrastructure Plans and Project Manual for the Nash Soccer Complex Documents are attached. Mr. Mitchell?
Good evening. Good evening. About six months ago, the council approved us a concept plan for the Nash Soccer Complex, authorized the city staff to proceed with doing engineering design work for the site layout for GeoTech Study Task One and Two, and you approved those claims tonight. We have a set of plans and the project manual for the soccer field complex that you can look through. They're ninety percent complete, and I'll be meeting with the engineer next Tuesday to finalize those documents. So with the acceptance of those plans, we will be ready at some point after the first year, pending being able to have the money to fund a bid and solicit proposals for doing the infrastructure work for that site. If you have any questions about that, the set of plans that we have right now are for the utilities for water and sewer irrigation, sanitary sewer, site grading, other things that will prep the site for the second part of the project, which would be the actual construction of the soccer fields. And that's obviously dependent on our ability to raise the funds for the project.
Any discussion?
How are we coming on raising funds for this project?
Well, I think we have some funds that have been donated and pledged by the Nash Foundation. I think there was Sally Hawkins and a couple other people are putting together a marketing program to go out and solicit donations and contributions and pledges for the actual building of the fields.
I had a visit with one of those folks, and they're feeling pretty confident that they're getting some good commitments.
Great, and I think they'll be ready in another couple weeks or so to actually kick off that fundraising campaign.
Am I reading this correctly, they're going to have to come up with six million dollars?
Well, that's the estimated budget. That includes engineering and contingency fees, and part of the reason for meeting with them next week is to go back through that budget. And now that we have some of the engineering work completed, to look at that budget and see whether or not that's what we need. But the estimate, total estimate, original estimate was about six million, yes.
So we're just voting on accepting the plans and the project manual or not?
All you're doing is accepting the plans for that initial work, which was the work that was included under Task One and Two.
Okay.
Those are the only two areas that the council's approved to date.
Okay.
Won't authorize us to go out to bid. We'll have to have a complete set of plans and the funds available to actually bid the project work.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
Make a motion to acceptance of the site infrastructure plans and project manual for the Nash Soccer Complex.
I'll second.
Have a motion in a second.
Crone?
Nay.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seventeen is discussion and possible action on Authorizing the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group to Keep the Workman's Compensation Escrow Balance of thirty-eight thousand five hundred and forty-five dollars and twenty-four cents on deposit or refund a portion of, or all, to the City of Guyman.
It's kind of an every-year occurrence of the residual of what's left over. Now, there's a few options we can do at this point. If, whatever the council decides, we can take out the full amount. But in the event we do that, we're still liable if there's a claim that comes in in the next, till the end of two thousand eighteen, that's on us, or we can keep it, and it will roll into two thousand nineteen. You can split it however you want within percentages. That's just, whatever we want to do, we can do with that remaining funds from the thirty-eight thousand dollars. So it's really y'all's, what direction y'all would like to go with that?
If we roll it over, do you have to pay premiums left for next year?
That I don't know, Larry. I'm not for sure if it changes or affects premiums in any sort of way. It's just every year you kind of have a leftover because of the amount of claims that were or were not come in, have or have not come in. And at this point, they're saying you have thirty-eight thousand dollars plus to do with what you will. If it's the council's decision to take it all out, we can, as long as there's not a claim for the rest of the year, that money's ours. But in the event a claim does come in, it's, we're going to have to take that out somewhere else. So if I were to advise, I don't think that is an extravagant amount of money. I would say let's just roll it into next year's. In the event we do have something come in, we're covered.
Okay. Any discussion? So your recommendation is leave it on deposit?
I'd say leave it there and roll it.
Okay.
I make a motion that we leave it in there on recommendations, city manager, on item seventeen, O-MAG Workman's Compensation Escrow Balance.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eighteen is discussion and possible action on Authorizing the City Manager to Apply for and Accept a Homeland Security Grant for the Fire Department in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. Money from heaven.
What's that?
Money from heaven.
Right, this is not a matching grant, this is a flat. We get that amount, and it is for the Fire Department. One of the trucks we had, we actually pulled from surplus because it was a... They were actually able to use it, and this would go to the...
Yeah, Dean. So Homeland Security gave us, you know, about five years ago, they gave us a trailer with all the hazardous materials, equipment, stuff that we needed. The trailer was too small, that's what they could afford at the time. Oklahoma Sheriff's Office had one, they were fixing, they were going to surplus it. Long story short, I don't know how Homeland Security got it back, but they did. They gave us the trailer, and we found the truck, the old medic four with no bed. Spent a hundred bucks, got it running, drove it over to the fire station. Homeland Security is going to put a new bed on that truck and rewrap the trailer so it looks nice, and that's the combination of those two things. Like he said, there's no match, it's all money given to us.
Questions, motion?
I'll make a motion to reauthorize City Manager to apply for and accept a Homeland Security Grant for the Fire Department in the amount of twenty thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars. I'll second it.
Have a motion in a second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you, sir. Agenda item number nineteen is discussion and possible action on the Guyman Area Arts and Humanities Commission's Request for Approval of the Following Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Nineteen Oklahoma Arts Council Marketing Expenses for Arts Events in the Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Dollars Each. Nineteen-one is co-op with Main Street Guyman Pageant Event. Nineteen-point-two is the G-A-A-H-C October Halloween Event. Nineteen-point-three is the G-A-A-H-C November Veterans Day Event. And nineteen-point-four is co-op with Main Street Guyman and Chamber December Event. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Beau Hawkins. I'm the elected president for the Guyman Arts and Humanities Commission. So I was here this evening, because I know that these were items on your agenda, so I'm here to help answer any questions that you have regarding those items, those particular items.
Are these events, the dollar event, are those grants from the Oklahoma Arts Council?
The money that we receive from the Oklahoma Arts Council is used primarily for advertising for art-related events in the community, which include things throughout the months that we can encourage the City of Guyman or any of the local businesses that are promoting events of, regarding arts and humanities. We would gladly partner with them to promote whatever event that happens to be. In the case of the particular event for October, we have an idea to promote like a Rocky Horror Picture Show night, which we actually started to secure the rights for a month ago, but it's been kind of difficult with correspondence. So given the offset of when the council meets in order to actually get approval before we can spend any money for advertising, the city manager indicated we need to go ahead and make sure we have approval of the council before we can proceed with any advertising. So at our last meeting, we had to map out what we wanted to do for October, November, and then any advertising we were going to do in December to try and just loop that all together to take care of the end of the calendar year. So that's why these kind of come at the times they are.
I'm sorry, Beau, but the way the Oklahoma Arts Council grant, it works in a fiscal year. So we're working through two thousand nineteen. The way that works is the city put up and you approved of the grant of a forty-five-hundred-dollar matching grant. So the total will come out of the City of Guyman, and then once by June, we submit everything to the Oklahoma Arts Council, and they reimburse us the forty-five-hundred dollars. Just to give you a little bit of background within a grant and how that works for the City of Guyman. So any expenditures at this point are coming from the City of Guyman with the notice that once everything is submitted by June, the Oklahoma Arts Council will split it with us. They reimburse us, it's a reimbursement grant of the forty-five-hundred.
You're asking for expenses not to exceed, looks like a total of four hundred dollars, a hundred dollars each?
Yeah, for those items. I think there was an item earlier that was the website.
It's coming up.
Expense, okay. But yes, yeah, the first one was for that.
I... I'm not sure what type of advertising you're going to do.
The advertisement that we would... The partnership that we're doing is actually just to give them the money or the opportunity to advertise through either the newspaper or there's a billboard there for events that are just local in Guyman. Also any radio ads that they might be interested in running through KBPS. Or if it's soon enough, be able to advertise in Mitchell Theater on their projectors. So we have a range of different advertising that we can do, just given the brief scope. We'd probably be limited to newspaper right now and just maybe once or twice if we can get.
So basically, you're just giving them permission to spend up to a hundred dollars to advertise?
Yeah, or we'll donate a hundred dollars towards our advertising funds for that.
That's a part of your grant?
Yes, as a part of the grant.
It's part of the grant fund.
Right, we're just shepherding the money or the funds to allocate towards more advertising, which is within the scope of what the CDI, or the CDI Grant for the Arts and Humanities Commission is granted.
How much of the grant have you spent so far?
So far? I don't have a period of numbers.
I don't have it either. Zero, looks like. I don't think that they haven't approved the next one, so.
Yeah, we haven't had anything approved yet.
I make a motion to approve the following, Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Nineteen Oklahoma Arts Council Marketing Expenses for Arts Events in the Amount Not to Exceed A Hundred Dollars Each, item nineteen.
Second.
Have a motion in a second.
Swager?
Aye.
Crone?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number twenty is discussion and possible action on Guyman Area Arts and Humanities Commission Request for Approval of the Two Thousand Eighteen, Two Thousand Nineteen Oklahoma Arts Council Grand Expense for the Annual Renewal of the Website Domain for GuymanArts.com in the Amount of twenty-four thousand, two thousand four hundred and ninety-four dollars. Reports attached. I have a question. I looked it up, and it came up on the internet that it was for sale. And then I found another link that linked it back to our city website.
We have the link that was previously there could actually be accessed through the city website. So initially, if you're on the city website and you wanted to see pages specifically, specific for arts and humanities, there was a link that would go to those pages. But the page, that website address itself has since expired, and so we need to re-acquire that address.
So I guess my question would be, can you utilize the City of Guyman website to do what you want to do without having a separate website so that all of, all these functions are in one place? Because what I got when I brought it up was that it showed your board, the people that are on your board, and that was it.
Good evening, y'all. Hi, okay. So the website we created did house everything there. It was GuymanArts.com. We also had GuymanArts.org, GCDSquared.com, and GCDSquared.org. So we created brochures, all of those have been sent out to multiple states over a year ago. And we need to renew the website so that when people type that in, they're going to get an actual website. It's actually not housed on the city's server, it's housed elsewhere.
So we'll let the twenty-four ninety-five, will that be out of your?
The grant.
The grant?
Yes.
Is that the best way to spend twenty-five-hundred, out of the forty-five?
So it's kind of a, not a complicated answer, but it would have been, what, two hundred and ninety-nine? Had we renewed. I would ask you guys to formally appoint someone to be our liaison who has the time and legal ability to make purchases. Because we're entrusted with the money, and we have the ability to vote, but none of us can come in and actually make a purchase. So that fell through, and it didn't need to happen. So if we had someone on staff who was dedicated to this, like we did before, it wouldn't have happened. No, it's not the best way to spend money.
Is there somebody you can negotiate with as far as sale?
We tried, we did try that.
You did try that?
We did, Josh tried to get ahold of them, and the way domains work is, you know, if they know that you want it, they know the value in it. And unfortunately... And unfortunately, when it didn't get renewed, someone scooped it up. So this is what we have to pay now.
So if, if you linked it with guymanok.org site and it wouldn't cost you anything, can you not?
The problem is all the marketing materials we have out will not work. So we can, we did have a website also on the city website via guymanok.org. And we do need that back as well. When the redesign happened, that did not get included. And we do need that, but that's not going to fix the problem of all of our marketing materials that we've already paid for. We have boxes and brochures with the maps and things that, you know, we spent nine months developing and we've spent the money on it. So, and they're out there. I mean, we can't collect back all of those maps and things that are out in that five-state area. So the best thing to do this year is to have the website up. And they did give us a grant for marketing. So the Arts Council, they know what's going on and it will be approved in terms of spending the money. The thing we're looking at now is can we secure another website and redesign the brochures? But for right now in this year, this current grant period, this is the best solution.
You have material out there now that says go to this website?
Yeah.
And this is what they're getting right now?
Right.
If they go to it, they're getting just sites for sale?
Everything says it.
Did you have a website under this domain name at one time? When did it expire?
Uh, the end of June.
Do you know how many people approximately visited the website before it expired?
We don't have Google Analytics on it now, but we need to do that. So that will tell us that. No, Google, no, it's free. Yeah, and we have the tag now. We just don't have the website, so. That's just code that we would paste in. I did the website. So it's just code that I would literally copy and paste into HTML code and it would generate all of those.
But this will come out of your grant?
Yes.
Yes.
This is just grant money. And we do have the funds. In fact, we have double that. It's going to cut into our marketing expenses that we wanted to do. We wanted to redo the brochure already and a couple other things that were approved in the grant. It will cut into that budget.
Any questions?
Make a motion, approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen Oklahoma Arts Council grant expense for the annual renewal of the website domain, guymanarts.com, in the amount of two thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we got one more due here. Agenda item number twenty-one is discussion and possible action on approval of application to the Oklahoma Arts Council for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Cultural District Development Program.
So the issue there on that item is the Oklahoma Arts Council is kind of changing their application model in which in order, before we can actually reapply for the next fiscal year, we have to first actually file a letter of intent that we are going to apply for the following fiscal year. So just to keep the council aware of what it is that we're doing, we just needed to make you aware that we intend to file the letter of intent to continue applying for the Oklahoma Arts Council for the fiscal year two thousand twenty.
Make a motion, approval of the application to the Oklahoma Arts Council for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty Cultural District Development Program.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Agenda item number twenty-two is discussion and possible action on raising the capitalization threshold for capital assets from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars. Did I read that right? Okay. Mr.? Any discussion, questions?
Reasoning?
In the event of, in the event, I mean, these are all, it was this way previously. In the event, as a city manager, I need to spend those funds. I feel that it would be in the best interest to do it appropriately, within the five-thousand-dollar range, as opposed to calling a special meeting just to do so.
Discussion? Motion?
When did we lower the threshold? Do you remember?
I don't remember.
Not on the capital, not on the capital assets.
I was going to say, did we ever do with capital assets anything?
I don't recall ever discussing it, but.
Well, it's not a tremendous, we're doubling it from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
I'll make a motion that we do approve raising the capitalization threshold on capital assets from twenty-five hundred to five thousand.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number twenty-three is discussion and possible action on raising the threshold for council approval of purchases from fifteen thousand to fifty thousand. Background attached.
This is a much larger raise that they're asking for. The primary job of the city council is to be stewards of the city money. This was lowered a few years ago. It's not a reflection on any of this, uh, current administration, current council, or anything else. But we lowered it because we felt it needed to be lowered. And I still feel that way.
I would like to say that these are budgeted. It's within the budget. So if there's a budget that y'all approve, that fifty-thousand-dollar threshold was in the budget. It's not just out on a whim. I would like to just make that move.
Well, my feeling is we've entrusted our city manager and department heads to present budgets and budget items according to their needs. And when you talk new vehicles or certain expenses, fifteen thousand is not much money in today's livelihood. We were at a higher rate. So everything's budgeted. We approve it when we go into the budget process. So do we not have enough confidence in our folks to go with the fifty thousand?
I stress again, it has no reflection on the current administration or current council.
Well, the budget is just that, just a budget.
Yeah.
It can change the first day you initiate it.
Yeah, if something comes up that they need thirty-five thousand all of a sudden, it's not a big deal to have a special meeting and get us to approve it if it's really needed. So I stand by what I'm saying.
Is fifteen too much?
Well, I thought so when we lowered it, but I thought, wait, excuse me, did you say fifty or fifteen?
No, I said, is fifteen too much?
Fifteen?
Yeah.
I wanted ten when we first lowered it, but I didn't get it, so.
I wanted five. I'm serious, I really did, at the time, and I think at the time it was necessary. I don't think it's probably five thousand is too low now, but I would stick with the fifteen.
Yeah, I think we'll approve the fifteens.
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we deny the approval of the raise from fifteen thousand to fifty thousand.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
I'm going to say nay.
We've got three ayes and one nay.
Okay, any new business? Any new business? Not, we'll move to the Guyman Utilities Authority. We reconvene as the Guyman Utilities Authority. Then one and two. Agenda item number three is discussion and possible action on approval of the wastewater operation and maintenance agreement between the Guyman Utilities Authority and Infomart LLC for additional service for installation of four variable frequency drives, VFDs, on sequencing advanced batch reactor SBR blowers. I believe this is to improve the efficiency of our wastewater plant.
Correct. We have, we have a cap within the budget of what it is we have on our utilities. And electricity is one of the major factors that we have out there. A huge amount of what we do is because once it hits at a certain point, it cranks up on our electricity and it just goes through the roof. And that cost is associated with our cap and we're way above it at this point. This is a two thousand fifteen A note residual, what we have left over after we did everything within our, with all of our projects on the two thousand fifteen A note. We still have the funds that are in that. And this is approving of getting these four VFD blowers at the wastewater treatment facility, which will reduce our cap. And I believe the payback by installing these would be within a year. So what we, if we approve this and install within a year, we'll catch up by not paying it in those high electricity costs.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve of the approval of the wastewater operation and maintenance agreement between the Guyman Utilities Authority and Infomart LLC for additional services for installation of four variable frequency drives and sequencing batch reactor blowers.
Second.
Have a motion as second.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number four is discussion and possible action on approval of ordinance number eight thirty-eight and ordinance amending the employment retirement system, defining contribution plan for the city of Guyman and Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Guyman and Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing to entry date, providing for repealer and severability in declaring an emergency. We did that a little bit ago. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve ordinance number eight thirty-eight, ordinance amending the employee retirement system, defining contribution plan for the city of Guyman and the Guyman Utility Authority of Oklahoma, providing retirement benefits for eligible employees of the city of Guyman and the Guyman Utility Authority in Oklahoma, and providing to entry date, providing for repealer and severability.
Second.
Have a motion as second.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number five.
We've got to declare emergency. I make a motion to declare ordinance number eight thirty-eight an emergency. I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Here, you get another reason.
What a deal.
Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action on approval of invoices to Cardinal Engineering for the water well number twenty-three replacement project. Invoice CIV two eight five one in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Invoice CIV, I think that's another line.
Yeah.
Invoice CIV two seven seven six in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
And I think that's a repeat.
We got some duplication with the two invoices.
This is to pay the hydraulist, hydrologist, Jim Roberts, for coming out and doing, he was working as a subcontractor for Cardinal Engineering. And this should have been paid sometime back. It was actually Levona that caught it and brought it to the attention, but we knew this is a part of the two thousand fifteen A note as well.
So you're asking for approval of two invoices?
Yeah.
Right.
Instead of four, there's two.
Okay, okay, I understand that.
I can read two more if you want me.
No, that's all.
Make a motion, approval of invoices to Cardinal Engineering for the water well number twenty-three replacement projects. Invoice CIV two eight five one in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Invoice CIV two seven seven six in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Crown?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number six is discussion and possible action on approval of change order number six to DBNE Company on the water well number twenty-three replacement project for an increase of one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars. Change order is attached.
This refers back to a change order number four. It's within the Geo textile equipment that we had. There was a miscommunication. It was kind of a double order, but Tracy has it on hand and we can actually use this at another facility. So that's all, the fifteen hundred, we will use that at another place.
I make a motion that we approve change order number six to DBNE Company on the water well number twenty-three replacement project for an increase of one thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Second.
Have a motion as second.
Crown?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number seven is discussion on possible action on approval of pay request number two in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighteen cents to DNE for the water well number twenty-three replacement project.
This is the final payment to DBNE. It actually came in about ten thousand dollars under bid, which is actually a savings for the city of Guyman. The Oklahoma Water Resources Board, along with Cardinal Engineering, has approved it and it is fully functioning at this point.
Questions, motion?
I've got a question. When you look at the bill, the application for payment number two, it says the amount due to this application is ninety-three thousand, eight hundred and eight dollars. Where does the other amount come from?
It says right there at the bottom, ninety-three thousand plus the twelve thousand, six forty-three oh two retainage.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion, approval of pay request number two in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars, eighteen cents to DNE for the water well number twenty-three replacement project.
I'll second it.
Have a motion as second.
Crown?
Aye.
Livinggood?
Aye.
Swager?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got four ayes.
Agenda item number eight is comments from city council members and city manager. Anybody got any comments?
We've got a few, but if you all want to go ahead, go ahead.
Let's go ahead and jump in there.
A couple weeks ago, we had the major rain in the city of Guyman, something that we're just not accustomed to. The Monday morning when we got here, we had significant damage done to some of our water wells pertaining to the electrical panels that we use. And I would like to just say that Josh Sparks Electric was Johnny on the spot and he helped us out significantly to limit, he got us back up and running and functioning very quickly to where it wasn't a catastrophic event for the city. So I just wanted to say thank you to him. He got us going in a matter of an hour. So just wanted to say hats off to him and thank you for, you know, not only helping us, but all of our citizens. Also, I would like to say that next Wednesday, we're having a trick or treat. It's here at the city of Guyman, along other places. We did this last year. I think a lot of the city staff will plan on dressing up and delivering candy to kids if they want to stop by in between one and five. That's when we'll be open. We will try to do that again. And also just wanted to remind everyone. And also, just wanted to remind everybody, as Halloween is Wednesday, to slow down in the evening, as kids might, you know, run out. Just take your time and be a little bit slower. Be wary of kids. That's all I got.
Better point out that the fire department's having their Halloween drive-through. Is that, what time is that?
5:30 to 9:00.
5:30 to 9:00, okay.
Emergency services, out of the fire department. Followed, be all kinds of emergency services.
Emergency services, okay, out the fire department. Okay.
Sure, age limit?
One on our hair.
Anything else? Mr. Cron? Glad to have you back.
Thank you, I'm glad to be back.
Your fake knee working all right?
It's working good.
Okay.
So far.
So far. Livinggood?
Good.
Well, somebody in Guyman, we all saw it today, somebody's $100,000 richer.
I did not see that.
You didn't see that?
No.
Somebody won $100,000 in the lottery last night.
Well...
Mega millions. Wasn't me, wrong place. But anyway, but anyway, we're tickled for prosperity rings.
That's right.
And, anyway.
Spend it locally.
Spend it locally.
Donate.
And again, I want to reiterate the fact that Halloween's coming, and we've got lots of young kids, and it's dark out, a little time change, so, be safe, turn your lights on, give them some candy, don't be a Scrooge. And if you got, if you didn't get a Reese's cup, I'll give you one before you leave tonight. Anybody got anything else? No? Any new business? If not, we'll stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. We're going to reconvene in the West Conference Room, and we'll have a presentation with Rick Smith, the Municipal Financial Services, regarding the geo-mond process, and some discussions regarding the proposed 2019 budget. So, everybody's welcome to come in. If we don't have enough room, we'll move that back out. So, we'll stand adjourned as the Guyman City Council. Thank everybody for coming.